All right, if you'd all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
A pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic that stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, and welcome to May 17th, 2021 Board of Alderman Meeting. First up, we have minutes of the previous meeting, May 3rd, 2021. I would entertain a motion to approve. All right, we have a motion to approve. It has been seconded. Do we have any changes, corrections, anything about the minutes that are inaccurate? I am seeing no hands and hearing no one. All those in favor of approving the previous meeting's minutes, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion passes. We are on to outside the rail. We have a handful of people who would like to speak to the board on matters not on the agenda. First up is Cape Air, and I believe we have Andrew here to speak to that. And would you like to present?
Yes, if I may, and I'm joined by Cape Air's founder and CEO, Dan Wolf.
Oh, yes, and welcome, Dan Wolf. I see you there. All right, one moment, I will give you presenter capability here.
My goal in life is to never have somebody say to me again, "You are muted." Small aspirational goal, I grant you.
All right, Andrew, you have the floor, and you are now presenting.
All right, let me just pull up the presentation. Great, that should be, can you all see the airplane on the deck? Great. Well, good evening. I'm Andrew Bonney, the Senior Vice President of Planning for Cape Air, and I'm joined by Dan Wolf. Dan?
Hello, everybody.
We are delighted to touch base with you because we have been honored to serve Rutland since 2007, when we first started flying between Rutland and Boston. Now, 13 years later, our contract is up for renewal, and so we wanted to just have a chance to give you an update on where Cape Air is and how we've been doing. The typical metric for how companies are doing this, airline providers, air service providers, is on ridership. And you can see, based on this bar chart, against our predecessors, when we took over in 2007, the ridership's been really strong. Obviously, last year was a very difficult year with COVID, but we're seeing great gains again across the company, but at Rutland as well. So we were up more than doubled the ridership of our predecessors. It's been going really well. And the operational performance has been very good as well. For the last 13 months, we've averaged 99.4% company controllable completion rate. Those are really the two metrics that a community looks at. Are people using the service and is it reliable? And on both of those scores, Cape Air is doing quite well. I'll turn it to Dan to talk some about the fast facts on Cape Air. Dan?
Yeah, I know you guys have a packed meeting tonight, so I'm gonna keep it as brief as I possibly can. Hopefully, that'll be fairly brief. Just a quick background on the airline itself. I've been a pilot flying around New England myself for 43 years. Cape Air has been around for 32. Andrew, I was doing some math. If we get a four-year here, we will have been in Rutland for exactly half of Cape Air's existence four years from now. So it's been quite a ride. In the picture there, you see Linda Markham, who is the president of Cape Air, and myself. I still am a licensed pilot, and we really have a passion for flying. Cape Air was born out of a passion for that. We started scheduled service between Provincetown and Boston in 1989. And we've grown over the past 32 years. We have 101 aircraft, 38 cities served, 660 employees or so. And we are an employee-owned company, which I think is great, and I think that actually is reflected in the service we provide and how we do it. So that's just a brief, brief on the airline. I could go on for hours. I'm not gonna do that, but I look forward to answering some questions if you guys have any at the end here. Go ahead, Andrew.
Thanks, Dan. So despite COVID, Cape Air has remained very resilient and strong. This is what our roadmap looks like today, including a pretty big presence north of Boston and then south of Boston as well. What distinguishes Cape Air among our peers is our ability to connect with all of the legacy carriers and even now, some of the low-cost carriers. So we connect with American, Delta, United, the major network carriers that serve Boston, but also JetBlue, which is now the single largest carrier at Boston. The pie chart on the left side of the screen shows you the relative capacity by seats of all of the carriers. And what's really important about this slide is that for Rutland, Cape Air connects with all of the carriers in blue. So more than 75% of the connecting seats at Boston are available to Rutland passengers. Of note, Cape Air is the only proposal that Rutland received that is able to connect with JetBlue and Delta, which are the number-one and number-two airlines at Boston. So if Rutland were to be served by one of the other carriers that propose service, you would lose about half of your connectivity at Boston Logan. So we don't want to see that for any number of reasons. And because of our partnership with JetBlue, Rutland appears on the jetblue.com website. It appears on the delta.com website, appears on the united.com website, and the aa.com, American Airlines' website as well. So because of the partnerships we've got, Rutland really does have terrific distribution, including on the two biggest websites at Boston, which is jetblue.com and delta.com. Again, indeed, take Cape Air's proposal. And then, of course, we connect to our own fairly robust network at Boston Logan, with four cities served south of Boston and six other cities north of Boston. And Dan, I'd like lateral to you to talk about our brand-new aircraft that we're using to serve Rutland.
Yeah, well, clearly, as somebody who's been a pilot for 43 years, and I did a lot of teaching early on, the most important factor in providing air service is safety, and very often, that's overlooked because a lot of people think it's a given. We started looking for a replacement aircraft for our fleet of what was 85 Cessna 402s about 10 years ago. And our criteria was that we absolutely insisted on having two engines. For most things in life, I think redundancy is perhaps most important. It comes to safety, and even though there are a lot of good airplanes out there with one engine, we really held the line and insisted on two. So we spent the last seven years working in partnership with the company, Technum, to develop a really good, modern, state-of-the-art, twin-engine airplane. There's one more seat than the 402, so we can actually have two pilots up front, nine passengers in the back. It's just a beautiful airplane. Modern amenities like air conditioning, for example, who would have thought? But it really does bring us into the 21st century as far as air transportation. Perfect airplane. It's 112 nautical miles from Rutland to Boston. It's not a long stage length. You don't need to go high. You're really better off staying a little bit lower in altitude and enjoying the sights on the flight along the way. So we have worked with Technum to design what we consider to be the perfect airplane, specifically first and foremost for Rutland, because your community was the first community to actually get the Technum in scheduled service. And Andrew, we've been operating in Rutland with that airplane for about eight months, I think. Is that right?
Yeah, actually pushing a year now.
Yeah, pushing a year. So it's doing great. We're really happy with it. The customers love it, and it's a great airplane. It fits the mission perfectly, and I think most importantly, it's two engines. It's really safe. And in my aviation background, from my perspective, it's just a great airplane to fly into the passenger. Dan, did I leave anything out?
Nope, that's great. I'll take it from here.
The Italian leather seats. I left. Okay, thanks.
Cape Air's proposal was the only one that has multi-engine aircraft. The other two proposals that Rutland received are for single-engine airplanes, which, as Dan just mentioned, we've chosen not to do in mountainous terrain, over water, at night, or in bad weather. We insist on having two engines for the safety and redundancy. And a really key point about the essential air service program that this air service is operated under by the USDOT is that communities by federal statute are entitled to service with aircraft with two engines. But if a community waives that entitlement and accepts service by a single-engine airplane, you lose that entitlement forever. So it's a one-and-done. So we sincerely hope to have the support of the community for reselection with our multi-engine aircraft. If the community does waive their entitlement to a multi-engine aircraft by recommending a single-engine airline, the community forever loses its entitlement to multi-engine service. So that's the interior of the Technum. I'm six feet tall, and I can cross my legs in any of the seats in any of the rows. It's a very comfortable aircraft and state-of-the-art avionics in the front end. So our proposal was to continue three daily round trips to Boston, but we also, this time, offered a option to have two daily flights to Boston and one non-stop flight to New York's JFK. JetBlue has offered to host us at New York, so we'd be right in the JetBlue terminal, which would give people of Rutland a different option than they've had before. DOT makes the ultimate decision, but they welcome community input on which service pattern they would like to see. So there's two options that Cape Air has proposed: three daily flights to Boston or two daily flights to Boston plus one daily flight to New York, JFK. So to bring it home, these are really the key points. If there's just one takeaway slide, this is it. Cape Air is proposing brand-new, factory-new aircraft. We're the only multi-engine aircraft proposal that Rutland received, and again, that federal entitlement goes away forever, is forfeited forever if the community accepts single-engine service. And as Dan mentioned, we've got nine seats, whereas one of the competitors' single-engine airplane only has eight seats, which makes us able to provide 13% more capacity. We've got the option for non-stop service to New York JFK in addition to your Boston service. And then we're partnered with JetBlue. Again, Cape Air is the only carrier that can connect with Delta and JetBlue, the two biggest carriers at Boston Logan. We've proposed a marketing budget of over $50,000 per year, which money goes a long way up in Rutland. We love partnering with organizations and on events up in Rutland. We're hoping those can resume relatively quickly. And then, in addition to Delta and JetBlue, we partner with all of the legacy carriers. So all the connecting carriers, including some of the more unique long-haul carriers, including Hawaiian now as well. We base planes and pilots in Rutland, so we have dedicated crew and aircraft. And then, finally, we're a New England company, the only New England company that bid on your service. We've been serving Rutland since 2007. The numbers look pretty good, and we would be absolutely honored to continue serving Rutland.
And Andrew, if I could, just before we get to questions, this looks like the middle-aged and old white guys club that we are very serious about diversity, equity, and inclusion. Linda Markham, who is our president and is one of only two women airline presidents in the United States, and Kelly Colopy, who couldn't be with us, who is our Director of Marketing here in New England, is out on a extended maternity leave. We give very good maternity and paternity benefits at Cape Air. And I do want to say also, I want to thank you all for your service. I did serve three terms in the Massachusetts State Senate. And during those years, really experienced life from the seats that you're all sitting in, which is really representing the best interests of the community and the public. Those were the best years of my life. I really enjoyed the public service, and I thank you all for doing it. I think the high point was when I got to go to Philadelphia and be a delegate for your senator in 2016. Not to get partisan or anything, but public service means a lot to me, and I thank you all for the work that you're doing and continue to do. And it's been a long honeymoon in Rutland. We love serving the community. We love the area, and we would just be thrilled to keep coming back, flight after flight after flight. And the last thing I would say, Andrew, you didn't offer it yet, but you probably were going to. That airplane, since it's serving Rutland, if any of you would like to go out, sit in it, if you haven't flown on Cape Air in that airplane, we can arrange to have, you know, get you through TSA, walk you out so you can get into the airplane, take a look, have one of our pilots talk to you about it. Just let Andrew know, and we can coordinate a visit for you. We are very proud of it. It was six or seven years in the birthing, and it's here, and it's really extraordinary. So that having been said, Andrew, back to you and questions and other comments.
Great, thanks. Yeah, I'm happy to take any questions.
Alderman Clifford?
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, for the great presentation. I just want to say or ask, how long is the flight from Rutland to JFK?
Rutland to JFK will take about, the actual flight time will be just over an hour. We add some block time because JFK has, it's a big airport, so it takes a while to taxi around. So you'll probably see the published flight time at an hour 25, but in fact, it's maybe an hour 10.
Thank you.
Alderman DePoy?
Thanks for the presentation, Andrew and Dan. It's a great airline. My wife actually just flew it last week. She connected in Boston to Delta and went to Atlanta and then returned into Rutland. I had the pleasure of watching your aircraft take off and land for both her departure and her return. I don't know as my stomach would be able to endure such small planes, but I would absolutely be thrilled to go take a look at the new aircraft and, you know, take a walk around, take you up on that offer for the presentation on it. So whenever we can set that up, Mr. President, I'd like to do that with Andrew and Dan or whoever else can represent Cape Air down there, and I would be happy to attend.
Great.
Thank you, Alderman DePoy. Then Alderman Davis?
A question, is there a request before the board? Is there something that you need to continue to provide service?
Sure. So the USDOT is running this process overall, but they have requested that elected officials provide community input. So there is an opportunity for anybody to provide community input, but they give particular interest to the elected officials. And I've provided Mr. Wickham with the contact information for how to do that, as well as the actual, the text of the RFP.
Thank you.
Alderman Grosso?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, Mr. Wolf and Andrew there, I haven't flown in a long, long time, but if that's what you're looking for, you got my support. I think it's a great asset for Rutland. I think having Cape Air here in Rutland, having air service is a wonderful thing. I'm with Alderman DePoy. I'd like to go down. I would also hope you'd bring in a stearman and take him up in that someday, too. I've done that a couple of times, and I think that would really, really make me more comfortable with flying. So let me know, Alderman DePoy, when you're going, okay? Please.
Alderman, when we started the airline in Provincetown, we had a 1931 Stinson, which is not a stearman, but it's a pretty cool antique airplane, and we used to do the sightseeing rides. But it's a pretty spectacular flight, so every ride with Cape Air is a sightseeing ride, but I would love to take you up in a stearman.
They're awesome. I've done the whole thing. I've done the barrel rolls, the flips, everything. It's incredible. I urge anybody to do it. But I would like to see your airplane again. Thanks for serving Rutland, and we're glad to have you here, and we hope it's many more years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So specifically, Andrew, I mean, I think what would be wonderful is either to hear from the Alderman as a group or individually to the DOT. I think it'd be a wonderful, wonderful thing.
And if I could just add to that, members of the board, if you are interested in learning more, please do reach out to the mayor to provide more information on Cape Air and the proposal or the ultimate proposals as well, but the more feedback...
Yeah, so Mr. Chairman, can I plug in here? I think this would be an opportune time for me. Just briefly, I want to thank the folks from Cape Air for coming in. I've gotten to know these two gentlemen pretty well in the last few years, and we have met earlier in the last few weeks. I've been down. I've seen the plane. I have met with the other representatives of the other two airlines who are looking to possibly take over the service. This is, you know, a decision that I have shared with supporting me in our recommendation the Chamber of Commerce had in the last two rounds, and also this time, and the airport manager, who we have put together a little committee to assess, you know, the situation currently and to look and see what we're looking for in the future. So, you know, this is a big decision. It's important for the city, important for the region, and I take it very seriously. Cape Air has been a great partner over the years, excited about the new plane, excited about their willingness to go the extra mile, and a lot of their proposals going forward. And we're looking forward to sending a letter down to the federal government here in the next week to 10 days as they have related to us that they're looking for that guidance somewhere around the third week of May. So the time is coming up, and again, I appreciate them coming in and telling their story. So thanks.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. It was really great to see you a few weeks ago, and I look forward to our next visit, and I hope you're doing well.
I am. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, Mayor Lair. Are there any questions, comments from members of the board? If not, Dan, Andrew, thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you. I hope to meet you in person sometime. I'd like the three dimensions more than the two dimensions, that's for sure. Hang in there.
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Yep, good night, guys.
Good night.
Have a great night, guys. This brings us up to Sally Gill, buried conduit request, pages 1A through A6 of your packet. Do we have anyone on to speak to this? Alderman Davis?
Not that it matters. I'm just a little confused why this is outside the rail and not part of the agenda.
Alderman Davis, I may be able to answer that regard. I know the folks, the engineers specifically, have been working with Miss Gill in regards to the request. I agree with you in regards to, probably based on these letters, part of the agenda. I really expected that Miss Gill was gonna be on to answer questions or to just for insight into the request specifically. I did speak with the assistant here on Friday, not at length, but a little bit of time going over and making sure that all the boxes were checked, i's dotted, t's crossed. This is basically very, very similar to a pole and wire request. At the end of the day, if you wanted to put your petitions and letters, you could do so. If not, it would just take a, you know, a motion to suspend rules and to go ahead and approve that request based upon the information that was provided.
So if I may also, I'm assuming that Acting Commissioner Rotondo has signed up on it, so there's no concern, Jim, with that?
Yeah, I can add a little information to it. I did see the application, Karen. And Mrs. Gill wants to subdivide her property. It's at the corner of Field and Grove Street, and there's a utility pole on Grove, and she's proposing to put in, install buried conduit for her electrical service line to the new property or to the subdivided lot. And so she filled out a buried conduit application. We reviewed it. We reviewed the maps. We approved it. And that application needs to go to the Board of Approval, to the Board of Aldermen for approval. And she's not crossing Grove Street. The pole is on her side of the street. It's basically installing buried conduit in about 12 feet of city property, and we don't see any problem with it.
So I'll move to suspend the rules.
We have a motion to suspend the rules, and it has been seconded. But all those in favor of suspending the rules, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
And I'll move for the approval of the buried conduit request in regards to, I think it's 85 Field Avenue.
Second.
Yeah, to approve the request, and it has been seconded. If there are any debate discussion questions related to this? Hearing and seeing none, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you, Jim. Up next, we have Reverend Patricia Stratton, First Baptist Church. Reverend, please, yours.
Hello, everyone. I assume you can hear me. I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Mayor for inviting me to come and speak to you this evening, and thank you all so much for being willing to listen. My name is Reverend Patty Stratton, and I'm Senior Pastor of the First Baptist Church of Rutland, Vermont. Our meeting house is located at 81 Center Street, and most likely, you're familiar with that facade. Our beloved community, our congregation, is very small and is elderly. And so we have come to realize in the last two months that we can no longer afford to care for the meeting house. We have some repairs that need to be done. With a building that age, that meeting house has been located at 81 Center Street for almost 150 years. And as far as I have been told, the meeting house before that was just a few blocks up the hill and around the corner from the fire station. And when that building burned down, the congregation decided they wanted to be closer to the downtown. And so that's how we ended up at 81 Center Street. We have a very small endowment that has primarily been used for upkeep, as you can imagine, with a tile roof. Every time the wind blows, I say a prayer, "Please, God, protect the tiles." There's ongoing roof repair, and there are other issues that we have as well with that space. Now, it's a rather large space. We have a large upstairs sanctuary. We have classrooms, a half gym, a bathroom with a shower upstairs on the second floor. And our half gym is actually a labyrinth now. We have a lovely meditative walking, indoor walking labyrinth, the only one in the area, by the way. Downstairs, we have a second worship space or meeting space that we call the vestry. Then we have a fellowship hall. We have a number of classrooms around that hall. We have a parlor, which is like a living room area, and then we also have an additional room across the hall from that. We also have a full-service kitchen with Vulcan appliances. They're old, but they are amazing. Our building is also handicap accessible. A few decades ago, the congregation renovated and put in a full-size elevator. So when you enter on the side of the church down the drive, you can get into the elevator and go upstairs, and the whole downstairs is fully, easily accessible. So I came to you tonight because I called the mayor about a week and a half ago, I guess tomorrow will be two weeks, to let him know that we understand as a congregation that this building, this facade on Center Street, is cared about by Rutland City. We noticed that it shows up, I've noticed, in the seven years that I've been here, that our building is often featured in photographs and paintings. And most of the time, when someone takes a photograph of Rutland City from the bottom of Center Street, you can see our building there. We are an American Baptist-affiliated congregation. That means that we own our building and we own our property. Our denomination does not. And so as a community of faith, we're now wrestling with how to best maintain this space. We have no intention of disbanding our church. We want to continue as First Baptist Church as a congregation, but we just cannot afford to maintain that building. And so I called the mayor to let him know that we were on this journey of trying to decide what to do. We are open to really any... to really any idea that any of you would have. It would be wonderful if we could stay there and share the building with maybe multiple other organizations that would want to help us maintain it. We would be willing to entertain offers to purchase the building if there was a developer that was interested in doing something interesting with it. We've watched other sister churches in Vermont and New Hampshire walk through these processes and our regional executive minister has given us some encouragement and some ideas. I do know that we are listed on the Vermont Historical Registry. I have been in contact with them and have conversations this week to talk about them and with them and what they might be able to do to help us. But I just, we felt as a congregation and being good neighbors and good citizens that we needed to let the entire city know of our struggle to maintain the facade, to maintain the building. We don't want it to fall into ruin, but we are entertaining all options, including conversations with salvage companies even that might, we may end up needing to take the building down. But we haven't made any decisions yet. We're at the beginning of our process. We just realized that we can no longer afford to maintain the building as we have for all of these years. And so I just wanted to share where we are in this, to let you know the journey that we are on and to invite you to have conversation with us, be creative with us, dream and imagine with us, and see if we can work together to find a way through.
Thank you. Alderman Boy.
So Reverend Stratton, have you reached out? I mean, I know that the Baptists are much more prevalent down south. You go several blocks in Georgia, South Carolina, you know, Alabama, and you see tons of churches just going up, I mean, big, big churches with a lot of membership. Have you reached out to any of those communities to see if there's any way that they could do a fundraiser for you? I don't know. I'm just thinking off the top of my head here, but like a GoFundMe of your Baptist friends down south to see if there's any available funds that they could send north to you to help out with your building?
Yeah. The simplest answer to that would be that we're not that kind of Baptist. Those are primarily Southern Baptist churches. We are American Baptist churches. Back during the Civil War, the Baptists in the United States divided between the Northern Baptists and the Southern Baptists primarily over the issue of slavery. And so the Northern Baptist Convention eventually became the American Baptist Churches in the United States and Puerto Rico. And so I am working through my regional executive minister and I'm reaching out to my national denomination to let them know what's going on. But American Baptist Churches are groups or individual congregations that choose to relate to one another to accomplish mission and ministry that we couldn't do separately on our own. But each American Baptist Church is an autonomous congregation. And so that's the reason why our name is American Baptist Churches. That ES on the end of churches makes us different than the Southern Baptist Church, the United Methodist Church. So I am reaching out, but those wonderful, dear people that you're talking about probably wouldn't be interested in helping us because we're not that kind of Baptist. I hope that helps.
Thank you, Reverend. Alderman Davis?
Muted.
I'm sorry, you're muted and I can't hear you.
Sorry, I apologize. Have you or your congregation thought about a shared use and what that shared use would look like, whether it be education or recreation or your, your, this to the courthouse?
Yes, and yes, we would be open to all of those conversations. In my seven years of being here, I reached out, I've reached out to many different groups and organizations. In particular, I can tell you the rec department, not recently, but the prior, I can't remember her name, she went to Burlington, I think you all probably know. I showed her the facility. We talked about possibilities. Nothing ever came of it. Our building has been used and is, it's okay by the fire marshal to even use it as a summer camp, for a place for students to sleep over. We've done that hosting the youth works group. Some of you may have heard of them that would have come into prior to COVID, came to Rutland for 10 years running. We hosted them actually and housed them for seven years in our downstairs. So we've done some renovation and done some improvements to the space in order to be able to be in line with that sort of thing with the fire marshal. We are an older building, so we don't have a sprinkler system, but we have hardwired smoke alarms and that sort of thing. One of the things that kind of has made the tipping point for us, some of you may remember, three years ago, we had a sprinkler system that burst during an extended period of below freezing weather. That was covered by our insurance. This February, during an extended period of below freezing weather, through a confluence of events, which I could explain, but suffice it to say, we had another pipe break in a different place that has caused a fair amount of damage to a space that had not yet been renovated, primarily our kitchen and our downstairs entry. A lot of what, we were able to cover the cost of mitigation. It cost about $35,000. Because it was just an ordinary bathroom pipe, pipe break, our insurance company doesn't cover that. So we paid for the mitigation out of pocket, but because my congregation is so small and, and so much older, we don't have anymore of the physical ability to even like do the painting and put the baseboards back and those sorts of things. So right now, we're looking at hoping to organize some volunteer days this summer. We have the supplies that we need. We just need manpower to come in and scrub the kitchen and clean up from, from what was left after the company mitigated the pipe break. We need painting. We need that sort of thing. So we're hoping to invite the community to come in and help us with that. And also our sister American Baptist Churches here in Vermont and New Hampshire. But it's the ongoing knowing that we don't have the money to continue to, to keep the building that has really caused my board to begin to wrestle with this and, and that's why I'm here on their behalf.
Thank you. Alderman?
You broke up me?
Yeah, Alderman Garuso.
All right. Thank you, Reverend. I've been listening to you and here's what you've been saying and, and I hope you, I think this is your answer. In 22 years, my office has been in the same place. The roof leaked terribly and I called my landlord. The paint was coming off the building and my landlord painted the building. My landlord plowed the driveway. Just a few weeks ago, my water heater burst and was leaking all over and the landlord came up and put in a water heater and fixed it all. And it didn't cost me anything. I paid the same amount of rent over these years. And what I learned over that is I'm not a landlord. I'm not a building owner. I run an advertising business and you are a pastor, you are a people person. And what I would recommend to you is go find a landlord. Go find the gentleman in the 21 Merchants Row. No, no. Go talk to Mr. Foley, maybe go talk to the Gincola family. There are other people that own buildings and have them answer your question, what they would do. They're people that own buildings. I mean, I don't own buildings. And I think your answer lies there is what would you do if you owned this building? What would you do? And I think you'd get some help. It's gonna take a little bit of footwork, but Mr. Foley, not only a great guy, Mark is wonderful, but he buys buildings and maybe he could either help you, maybe he'd want to buy your building. The Gincola family, they own an awful lot of them and they rehab buildings. And 21 Merchants Row used to be the Knights of Columbus and that gentleman is just look at the money and time he's putting into it. So I think that might be your answer. And then who knows, Middlebury, Manchester, Burlington, there might be someone else that's in the building business. But I think that's your answer, is they can help you get your building problem off your back so you can go on and minister and lead people and do what you do best. That's my suggestion.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Again, one of the reasons that I'm happy to be here tonight to share this with you all is for that sort of advice and those sort of connections. I've only been here seven years and there are a lot of people I have yet to meet. So any suggestions like that, I very much appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other? Alderman Gillum?
Yes, thank you. Reverend, I just sent a text over to another person who's looking for a building. I sent your address to them, so hopefully they'll be calling you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Alderman Davis?
And also maybe via the mayor's office, Reverend Stratton, you could be in contact with Brennan, especially through the Rutland Redevelopment Authority, who may have
Okay.
opportunities. Brennan is very good about knowing maybe who's looking for something and how to, how to use that shared space. So I would encourage you. He helps with the Rutland City Community Development or Development. So I think that may be a great place to start as well.
That's fantastic. You know, partnerships are wonderful. We actually were able to house the Rutland Parent-Child Centers Birth to Age Three daycare for nine months after they had a problem with their building pipes exploding. And it was an absolutely wonderful partnership that we cherished and enjoyed that and we wish we could have kept it going for a long time.
Thank you.
If anyone would like to see the building or, you know, have a tour, just give me a call. My cell number is public. It's 802-353-2110. That's the best way to catch me. The church does have a line. We're in the book, but I'm not always there to answer and listen to the answering machine. I get there about once a week into the actual building itself right now. We just opened for in-person worship, started on May 2nd. So it is good to be back there in the sanctuary again.
Very good. Thank you, Reverend.
Thank you all. Oh.
Hi, thank you. Sorry, just one quick question. Do you have like an estimated figure for the immediate repair needs or is it more about ongoing maintenance?
It's more about ongoing maintenance, but we are working on gathering the estimates that we have for things that we have deferred maintenance on. For example, the rose window that's in the front of the church that faces Center Street. We have an estimate that just to have that window reletted would cost us $35,000. And that was probably four, three, four years ago. We got that estimate. And then there are, I think, six windows on, on each side, so 12 more stained glass windows. And what's happening is they're buckling and the rose window actually has a few little pieces that have fallen out. I mean, those sorts of things in a 150-year-old building are expensive. And we don't want it to fall down around us or become a problem.
Thank you, Reverend. Any other questions, comments from the board? If not, we thank you for joining us tonight. I think you've been given a few good leads and some people will be direct.
Yes, thank you all so very much. One of the things that we just feel so strongly about is getting the word out and we don't want to do anything that would be sad for Rutland City, you know, because we love being in Rutland and we love being a part of the community and we appreciate being on Center Street. And so we are really looking forward to the magic that might happen from all of this. So thank you so much for sharing the burden. I often say that joys shared are multiplied and burdens shared are divided. So thank you all so much.
Thank you very much.
Am I still muted?
You are not muted. Who is this? All right. Well, thank you, Reverend. We appreciate you staying with us. We are still on outside the rail. Do we have any members of the public who wish to address the board on matters not on the agenda? I'm hearing none, so that moves us on.
Can you hear me? This is Sally Gill. Can you hear me?
Yeah, say your name again.
Mrs. Gill.
Sally Gill.
Oh, Sally.
Hi. I am so sorry. I was on the call from the beginning. I heard the whole Cape Air presentation and when it was time for me to speak, you apparently couldn't hear me. So thank you very much. I understand, was it James Rotondo gave a quick synopsis?
Yep. He summarized it and we took a vote to approve the buried conduit request.
That is wonderful. And my only clarifying question is, is that approved without the $10,000 bond? There's a big bond mentioned in the standard agreement that you have.
This is Jim Rotondo again. If I can make a suggestion?
Yeah.
Yeah, the permit application calls for a $10,000 bond and that's really meant to have money available if we need to repair any road structures or things of that nature. Because this, this project is so small, I do think a bond probably in the order of similar to what we may charge for installing a sewer lateral or something like that might be appropriate. I think, I think a bond for $1,000 would cover any, would cover that nicely.
Well, I would appreciate that very much if that's what everyone is comfortable with.
Alderman Davis?
So I guess a point of order, do we need to add a motion or amendment motion to reflect a $1,000 bond for the conduit versus the $10,000 bond?
Hey, Bloomer, if you're on, I would ask you to speak to this. My sense is we probably do need something here.
Yes, actually, it would be a good use of the motion to reconsider, just to have, you know, two, two folks on the prevailing side move, move to reconsider and then a new motion could be put on the table if, if the group so desires to take that requirement out of the standard conditions.
I'll move to reconsider.
Second.
We have a motion to reconsider and it has been seconded. Would all those in favor of reconsidering the motion on the buried conduit request, please indicate by saying?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll move to approve the buried conduit request for Field Avenue and lower the bond request from $10,000 to $1,000.
Second.
Right. We have a motion and it has been seconded to approve the buried conduit request on A5 Field Ave. with the bond being lowered from $10,000 to $1,000. Is there any discussion or debate? Alderman Gillum?
Yeah, that would come under item number nine in the agreement. Need to change to $10,000 to whatever the number we're going to put in there.
I would think just Sally Gill, her name should be in there, right?
It's signed at the end, but.
Right.
Right.
Very good. Is there any further discussion, debate, or questions? Not, there's a motion that has been seconded. Would all those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, thank you Sally. Sorry, you got muted out there earlier.
Well, I appreciate you approving this and I appreciate you letting me get in there right before the rest of your big, long meeting. So I'll exit and thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a great night.
You too. Bye-bye.
All right, so very quickly, we're still outside the rail. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board on matters not on the agenda? Not hearing anything, so that moves us along to communications from the mayor, Mayor Lair.
Yeah, thank you very much. I just have one issue I wanted to bring forward tonight under communications from the mayor. So over the last several weeks, a hiring committee comprised of two former commissioners of public works, a DPW union representative, your HR department, Human Resources, and myself have been vetting and interviewing prospective candidates for the position of Department of Public Works Commissioner. We have been very fortunate to have received several extremely qualified candidates, many of whom have had exceptional and have exceptional qualities they brought to the table. However, one candidate rose head and shoulders above the rest. Not only did this candidate hit a home run during the interview, but also brings a wealth of experience in municipal government in positions such as a public works environmental manager, a stormwater program coordinator. With over 13 years of experience in government realm focusing on infrastructure project management, team building, state and federal agency permitting, and environmental planning, we are very fortunate to have a person of this caliber looking to lead the Department of Public Works in Rutland, Vermont. I want to thank the committee for their expertise in helping during the interview process and I want to read off the names of the committee members. Thank you all. Paul Clifford, Jeff Wenberg, Pete Kelly, Jody Briel, and myself, Dave Lair. I also want to take a moment to thank Jim Rotundo for his leadership during the last several months as interim commissioner during this period of transition, which will last just a bit longer. So it is my honor and privilege tonight to put forward the name of Whitney Marsh, the Public Works Environmental Manager in Dunedin, Florida, D-U-N-E-D-I-N, as my nominee to be the next Commissioner of Public Works for the City of Rutland. And your committee was unanimous in that vote and in that presentation. So we will be forwarding, and I will be forwarding, my office will be forwarding Whitney's resume to the Board of Aldermen first thing tomorrow morning. Whitney will be available during the next three weeks by phone or email for any Alderman to ask questions and interact with Whitney. So I'm asking tonight, as is standard protocol, to table the nomination and come back and vote at your next meeting on June 7th. So I'm asking for a motion to table, please.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to table that has been seconded. Would all those in favor of tabling the nomination of Whitney Marsh on June 7th, 2021, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mayor Lair. Do you have anything else for us this evening?
No, I think that's going to do it for tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions for the mayor before we let him off the hook here? Seeing none, very good. We're on to additions and deletions to the agenda. Believe we have none, so that takes us to reports and letters from department heads and officials. Up first, we have Barbara Spalding, RRA. First item is Brock increased refrigerator freezer capacity, pages one through six of your packet. Barb, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. As in your packet, I included the grant agreement and information with regard to Form PM 1, and we are respectfully requesting that the Aldermen allow the president to sign on their behalf Form PM 1, which designates the mayor as authorized municipal official to sign the grant agreement and any and all documents necessary to execute the project on behalf of the city.
Alderman Davis?
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules and it has been seconded. Would all those in favor of suspending the rules, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
And I'll move to authorize the chair to sign on behalf of Form PM 1, which designates the mayor as the authorized municipal official to sign this grant agreement and any and all documents necessary to execute on behalf of the city.
Second.
We have a motion that has been seconded. Is there any discussion or debate on this issue? Hearing and seeing none, would all those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Barbara, you are still up, pages seven through 12, Lincoln Place.
Thank you. So the city was awarded the $498,000 VCP grant for Lincoln Place. And in your packet, you have Form PM 1, which designates the mayor as authorized municipal official to sign the grant agreement on behalf of the city, as well as any and all other documents necessary to execute the project. And that is our request this evening.
Second.
We have a motion suspended and it has been seconded. Would all those in favor of suspending the rules indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries.
And I'll move to authorize the chair to sign on the Aldermen's behalf Form PM 1, which designates the mayor as authorized municipal official to sign the grant agreement and all other documents necessary on behalf for Lincoln.
Second.
We have a motion.
Chairman, I'd like to say that Barbara has done a tremendous job acquiring these kind of grants to help with these projects.
I'll second that.
Thank you Barbara.
Thank you Sharon for saying that. My mom is actually visiting from Connecticut this evening and she got to hear that, so more than you know, more, I really appreciate it.
Well, I'm glad, but it's true. I didn't do it because mom's there.
Thank you.
We have a motion that has been seconded authorizing the president to sign on behalf of the board PM 1 agreement, which designates the mayor as authorized municipal official to sign the grant agreement and/or any documents necessary to execute the project on behalf of the city. Would all those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much Barbara. I will just reiterate that you do an amazing job each day, every day on behalf of the city. Thank you so much for the work that you do.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
You as well. That brings us to Jim Rotundo, who has a couple items on the agenda. Up first, request authorization to award Moonbrook metal study. This is page 13 of your packet.
Hello again, everyone. I request authorization for the mayor to sign a professional services contract with Stone Environmental for not to exceed contract amount of $21,966 to perform a metal study along the segment of Moonbrook that passes Howe Center. Just a little history, the board granted authorization on March 1st to issue the RFP. We received six proposals on April 14th. They were reviewed, scored, based upon the criteria identified in the RFP. Actually, you should have that scorecard in your packet. There's a spreadsheet that lists all six consultants that submitted a proposal. And Stone Environmental was selected as they received the highest score and provided the most competitive pricing on the base scope of work. And just as a reminder, this study is a requirement of the settlement agreement between the city and the Agency of Natural Resources addressing the impairment of Moonbrook.
Alderman Clifford?
I move to suspend the rules, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules that has been seconded. Would all those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Clifford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would move to request the mayor authorized to sign the contract for professional services to perform a metal study along the segment of Moonbrook that passes through Howe Center to Stone Environmental for a contract amount not to exceed $21,966.
Second.
We have a motion and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion, debate, or questions?
I just have a question. When Graham Car Wash was there, I used to call on him for advertising and all those car washes have these pits in them that fill up with like dirt and stuff, obviously from the cars. And I'd go there once in a while and the guys would be taking wheelbarrow load after wheelbarrow load of this dirt that came off cars and they would be dumping it on this embankment where the Moonbrook was. This is a long time ago, but they literally would fill along the side of the building and you would fall down in there. And I can't imagine that there being, you know, detergents and vehicle oils and road salt and all that stuff in it. But I remember for years and years and years, and I was a kid then, I mean, probably that was being dumped on this, I'd ever been checked, it would be completely along the side of the old car wash building where its enterprise car rental is there now. But I mean, it was massive. It was massive, massive amounts of the stuff that they would take out of the car wash and dump beside their building. I mean, just, you know, for information, whatever. I know it was being dumped on the, do you know anything about that, Jim? Or do you, has anybody ever checked that?
I don't know anything about that in particular. This study is really to check the water quality and the sediments in Moonbrook. And then hopefully, as long as we get Joe Giancollo's approval, the consultant also proposes testing, you know, some of the private property and some of the outfalls from the industrial park to see if we can determine where the metals are coming from. But I don't really, I don't really have any firsthand information on what you just described.
I just throwing it out because I just remember years and years of that. Whenever I think of Moonbrook, I think of that. They were just, every time it seemed there were just a lot of it that were dumping there. And I'm sure it's grown up and no one even knows anymore. But back in those days, I don't think they cared. Just to throw it out there because it's precious that the water not be contaminated by whatever that is that they were putting in there. So I throw it out, but thank you. I'm still in favor of the vote.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, discussion points? If not, we have a motion and it has been seconded. Would all those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Jim, we have you up again. Request authorization to sign contract amendment Grove Street Bridge, pages 14 through 21 of our packet.
Okay, so this item has to do with our $3 million structures bond, which was approved by voters on March 5th back in 2019. You might recall that we had five culverts and the Grove Street Bridge that were all going to be encompassed by that $3 million bond amount. So I respectfully request the authorization for the mayor to sign a contract amendment and then not to exceed amount of $29,633 for professional services to perform construction phase services, including inspection and administration for the rehabilitation of Grove Street Bridge. So this contract amendment will extend DuBois and King's design contract to include construction phase services, including inspection and contract administration. The additional work will be paid through bond funds. And in your packet, I included the initial contract, the proposed amendment, and the initial construction cost estimate for the bridge.
Alderman Clifford?
I'd move to suspend the rules, take this matter up, Mr. Chairman. Second.
We have a motion to suspend and it has been seconded. Would all those in favor of suspending the rules, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. I would, a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the contract amendment in the not to exceed amount of $29,633 for professional services to perform construction phase services, including inspection and administration for the rehabilitation of Grove Street Bridge.
So. Second.
We have a motion and it has been seconded. Hearing and seeing none, would all those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Jim, we have you up one final time. Refer to committee, update on $7.4 million wastewater, stormwater bond projects. This is page 22 of our.
Yes, I'm asking the board to refer to the DPW committee, a construction and finance update of the wastewater and the stormwater projects that comprise the 2019 $7.4 million wastewater bond. And these projects in the bond are the East Creek Force Main Replacement Project, the Digestor Complex Rehabilitation at the Wastewater Plant, and the Northwest Neighborhood Phase 1A Project. What I'd like to do is update the board, including a discussion on the issues that the city has overcome during construction on these projects and how certain grants and subsidies are being applied.
Um, so moved.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to refer this to DPW committee and it has been seconded.
Just thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I'd like to do is, if I could, I'd like to schedule a meeting. Can I do that tonight with the clerk and with yourself for the 25th at 5:30? That way, if anyone has questions of Commissioner Rotundo between now and then, they could have plenty of time to ask.
We haven't voted on it yet, though. We might vote it down.
Thank you, Alderman Clifford. Assuming we vote in favor at all, it'll be set for May 25th at 5:30. And please do reach out to Commissioner Rotundo in the meantime to get any background you need. So would all those in favor of referring this matter to DPW committee, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, this brings us to Treasurer Markowski, April Treasurer's report. This was emailed to each of you. Treasurer Markowski?
Thank you. Hi, everybody. When we're looking at April, we have two more months left in the fiscal year as we're winding down. Today was our final fourth quarter tax collection, so it was a busy day here at City Hall. It's been pretty busy. Just of note in the report, cash balances, we have some high balances, special revenue funds and capital funds are carrying some high balances. Pooled cash account is about 1.7 million with the water fund having a positive, water fund and parking funds are the positive balance. Uh with the water fund having a positive, water fund and parking funds are the positive balance. Still carrying some uh negatives in the sewer fund and again, due to the projects that we're working on. Uh and transit fund is down as well. Um the delinquent report uh that's attached, I just note that uh collections have been slow. You know, folks are uh concerned about the current year and keeping current, which is a good thing, but we we really need to be addressing the delinquencies and getting people as I get new person in the office trained, uh starting up some uh a better process for payment agreements to see if we can get some folks on agreements for both water and sewer and for taxes. When I'm uh looking at the balance sheet, just noting that the unassigned fund balance has remained uh strong at two point two four million. Uh that's ten percent. That's about ten percent of our anticipated revenues uh budgeted revenue. So hoping that if we can remain there when we close the year, we would hopefully have funds available for taxpayer relief. So that has remained strong. Uh income and expenses. Uh the target expense uh is about eighty-three percent with ten months in. And the fund, general fund is about seventy-eight percent. Uh water and sewer funds, revenues are uh in both funds lagging, you know, the target with three quarters of billing. And expenses are lower than target uh for those funds, just to point that out. But of note, I think um when I was going through the information is really uh parking fund and transit fund, those funds really were hit with the COVID impact of COVID and you can see that in the numbers for both. So uh I had worked with Laz, uh John Santinello, a little bit about analyzing what he he had um come up with for revenue losses there. Pretty, uh his projection was we probably were down about thirty thousand due to COVID related and you'll see in the parking fund, revenues are are also down about twenty-one thousand in those two funds. Those funds are going to be problems for us if they continue in that path as they will require support from general fund, operational support. So just just something to wa, continue to watch um there. I also would point out uh the IRA balance sheet is strong, about eighty thousand in cash right now and holding some funds aside for capital projects, business development there. Um Also of note, we had a pension meeting this week. The pension um total assets as of March thirty-first, a hun, about a hundred and nine million. Uh the the pension fund really benefited, but we were looking at uh March to March. When you think of last March, we were at the lowest point in the market. To, so we were at eighty-two million and we're now at a hundred and nine million. So we really benefited there if you were just to isolate that one period of time. But from the investment manager uh in tracking, he he reported that I would share is that the good thing in the pension is that looking at, because it's a long-term fund, so the ten-year return on that fund is about eight point four or five percent. So we have a positive there. So let's just cross our fingers the market continues in the same path and uh for the pension fund. Um so those are the items that I had for April. Any questions on the financials?
Any questions, members of the board, for Treasurer Markowski?
I to replay, uh receive and place on file. Second.
We have a motion to receive and file and it has been seconded. Would all those in favor please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Treasurer Markowski.
Thank you.
All right, this brings us to Attorney Blumer. Uh first up, you have finance and maintenance agreement between state and city for improvements the highway rail grade crossing at West Street and Forest Street, pages twenty-three through forty-three of the packet. Attorney Blumer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh so yes, this uh first item is a finance and maintenance agreement that the state has uh asked the city to enter into um which relates to some improvements that uh they would like to do at the uh rail crossing at at the corner of West and Forest Street. And I've provided you with a fairly in-depth memo, so I won't go through um everything in detail, but the gist of it is uh the project uh will, you know, greatly improve the pedestrian safety at that particular um crossing. Uh there's going to be two gates uh that would be installed, one, one on West Street, one on Forest Street. Um there'd be some extra sidewalk that's installed. Um and there'd be some flashing uh uh crosswalk and some flashing lights uh on the east side of the uh of the crossing there. Um I tried to highlight also just some of the um, you know, potential downsides to entering into this agreement. Um I should say too that this is a project that's being, I think, ninety percent funded by the federal government and ten percent by the state. Um the city isn't being asked to uh contribute anything to the construction costs. Uh but because uh some of the construction takes place in the city's right of way, they do need our permission. Um and they do, they do sort of want to have some control over um that that right of way once the project is uh is completed. Um so the the three things that are the most um, you know, the things I guess I wanted to highlight from the agreement that you know, are the most concerning. Um the indemnification, the state was actually willing to make some changes in that area. Um originally, we're requiring us to indemnify the state for um really any damages that occurred because of the project. Uh but we were successful in convincing them that, you know, we don't, we're not going to have much to do with the project, so it's not really fair for us to have liability for a project that that isn't ours. We still would have indemnification, um agreeing to indemni, indemnify the state for any act or omission um from the city, but because we're not going to be involved, um you know, I'm I'm not at this at this point in time envisioning any way that we would be able to trigger that uh that particular provision. Um I know that Jim has had some conversations with them um to, you know, give them feedback on the design, but we're really um, you know, it's really just our right of way that's being used and we're not going to have much of a um much if any uh participation in the in the actual project. Um hazardous materials is um a potential uh issue. Uh again, Jim's aware that there's some contamination at in the adjacent property. And so there's a, there's a likelihood that we could encounter or that the state could encounter some contamination um in our right of way. And the way that their contract is set up is that we would be responsible for um handling that uh that issue. Again, we we pushed back and asked whether we could either, you know, the state would be willing to take all of the responsibility or if we could at least have an op, an option that if something's encountered, you know, we would pull out of the the project and or, you know, or we could at least assess what the what the cost would be and then potentially pull out if it was going to be too expensive. Um they, they weren't willing to make either of those changes, so uh there is some liability there that if there's uh contaminated soils found, um it would be the city's responsibility to to deal with those. And difficult to know whether there will be anything encountered and how much uh will be encountered, but we did our best to just give the the board kind of a ballpark you know, order of magnitude of of what that that might look like uh under a, you know, average scenario, I suppose. Um the final piece is this utility accommodation plan. Um so what this is, is it's a sixty-page document that the state puts out and it it requires that um for this particular right of way, the city would need to have a permitting process for uh any utilities that would would later be placed within the um right of way and probably even for anything that would need to be, that's that's currently there and need to be replaced. And it's it's a living document, so um, you know, we, Jim and I reviewed the the document um as it stands right now, but it it would change over time. And so it's really not, you can't really put your finger on exactly what it's going to look like in ten years, but we would still be subject to um, you know, whatever, whatever it says. Um I'm not concerned necessarily about it. Uh, you know, them saying that we can't put our our stuff there. It's more about the buffers that you, that you would need between, you know, certain utilities and um, you know, some of the things I'm sure the city would consider anyways, but there you know, it it will add some restriction that would not otherwise be there but for um this project and but for the city signing this agreement. So I did uh, you know, provide you with a a copy of the agreement and I provided you with a copy of the plans um so that you could hopefully see to some extent what um, you know, the the improvements that they're that they're proposing to make. Um and really, I think it's just the board uh, you know, weighing the ben, the benefits uh versus the potential, you know, risks or or downsides to to signing that agreement. And Jim and I are both obviously can answer, answer any questions that you might have.
Alderman Clifford.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, need um motion to uh suspend the rules for discussions, is that correct? So.
Second.
Have a motion to suspend the rules and it has been seconded. Would all those in favor please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Clifford.
Yeah, perhaps Jim or Matt can answer this. Uh going back to the contamination issue, if there is any. Um is this what the state is saying that they're not going to help out with that? Is this, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. It always amazes me that they, you know, they want to do projects with us, but they're not willing to help out with any uh, any issues that may come up. Uh Jim, can you think of anything that might be uh in that area of the said contamination area that could possibly, you know, cost uh tens of thousands of dollars?
Well, I I know and I'm aware of some personal property in that vicinity, vicinity that's contamin, that had contamination problems, so you know, it's hard to say if it's in our, if it's in our roadway or not. Uh but in your packet, we tried to make our best estimate as, as to what, you know, what it might cost if it's uh if it's petroleum contamination. Um just for reference, when we did uh Strong's Avenue bump outs in front of the railroad property, the 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 soils were contaminated. So we took that unit price uh that we, that we paid to to uh to dispose of these soils in that project and applied it to the um, the estimated amounts of of material that was going to be excavated. And I don't have, I don't have your note in front of me, Matt, but I think on the high end, was it around forty-six thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Yes, yep. Yeah, I think, again, that was your that was just a guy, from my perspective is to kind of give that order of magnitude, like, are we talking about, you know, hundreds of dollars or thousands of dollars? But I, I do think it's important to uh you know, just to reiterate that not knowing what, you know, what level of contamination there is, there is, again, if any, you know, it could be much less than forty thousand if we don't encounter much. Um but if we were to find something um you know, much worse than that forty or forty-five thousand would not, you know, it's not really, that's just our best, you know, for purposes of laypeople trying to make a decision, the best uh that we could give you, should give you that, again, that order of magnitude.
Okay. I mean, if I can, if if I can, can I follow up? Where would these funds come from to pay for this if that happened?
There, there wouldn't be anything, but I mean, there's nothing budgeted uh right now, so the choices would be that the, you know, the mayor to take it from the contingency fund, which I know towards the end of the fiscal year here, I'm not sure, you know, whether that, well, this project, I don't know how quickly they're going to break ground, so maybe it would be into next year, but that would be one, one option. Uh the board could, could use unassigned um funds, but obviously that has, has its downsides as well. Um or that we could try to budget it, although I, I think, you know, they will break ground before July of next year or whenever the next budget would go into uh into effect.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Gillum and Alderman Russo.
On the, on the uh plans that laid out the diagram, the parts that are shaded is the parts that the state is going to disturb to put this project in, am I correct?
Um I think the shaded part, Jimmy, maybe, maybe, actually, I'll let Jim answer because he looks at these for a living, so.
Yeah, Matt, I I apologize, but I don't, I don't have the plans in front of me uh tonight.
Um I could tell you what I think. I I believe the shaded part, Bill, is the, is the city's right of way. And the area to be disturbed is is probably just a a little bit to the, to the east and west of of where the um uh railroad crossing is. I'm sure they have to, you know, angle in a little bit to get, to replace the concrete pads there. Uh and then they're, they're also going to be um taking stuff out in or in order to put the sidewalks in. Um so that's uh, Jim probably knows this from memory, but I I think the sidewalks are just on the uh south side where where sidewalks either don't exist or they're in.
Right, right, right.
That, that's right, so.
Go ahead, Jim. I'm sorry.
Just, just to add to that, so just working on memory. Um so they are putting in gates like Matt, uh Matt had said uh for safety for pedestrians and for for vehicles. Um there's going to be new sidewalk on the south side that crosses the railroad tracks and then crosses Forest Street, so that's a big safety improvement. Um they're also uh including um a crosswalk in between Pine Street, this is like, this is across West Street now, between Pine Street and the railroad tracks with flashing beacons. So again, that's another uh, you know, another safety improvement.
Okay, thank you. I um, my concern is, how much is the state, does the state own the tracks on our road? Is that correct?
Well, the way, the way the drawing shows, I was surprised that it it looks like uh the tracks cross. Um, you know, all the work is in our right of way. So the railroad right of way, the way it's depicted on their drawings, comes up and then stops when it when it intersects with the city roadway uh right of way. So really, um all the work is in, is is on city right of way. Um so, so again, you know, the calculations, I think, were about four hundred yards, four hundred cubic yards of material that was going to be removed in that magnitude. Um and just to go back to the contamination again, because I don't want to, I don't want, I don't want you to get the wrong impression. We were, as Matt said, we wanted to try to just give you an idea what it might be. There may not be any contamination, but we don't know. They didn't do any test holes. Um so we wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of the fact that if it's moderately contaminated with petroleum, you know, that's, I think that number that we just gave is is probably fairly accurate. Um that's if all of it was contaminated. There, there may be only a small portion, there may not be any.
Because we've already done the Brownfield litigation on the west side of the tracks going towards Metal Street. So that's, the state's already signed off on that, so I don't see how we're going to be responsible for anything they find in that area. So I'm just concerned that we're going to get stuck with a bill because the state wants to do something. I think they should be paying for the whole freight. It's their railway. They should be paying for it. By the way, we're ensuring that, by the way, we're ensuring that, am I correct? We ensure that crossing?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure whether we, whether we do, Bill. We have, we have some pretty um convoluted license agreements with the railroad uh where some of them, you know, we we do have insurance, some, some we have indemnification uh responsibilities. Um so I I couldn't tell you off the top of my head how this one is set up.
Okay. I'm just concerned that this is out, this might be out of pocket for the city and this is a state project. They should be paying for the full freight like they did with Brandon and Pittsburgh on the uh downtown areas. They should be paying it like they do for them. Should be the same rules apply. So I'm a little concerned.
Alderman Grus.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh did Matt Blumer say we got, they, they're talking construction of July one, twenty twenty-two?
I'm act, I'm not actually sure what their timeline is. The mayor's had a few discussions with um with the head of uh Rail and Aviation and and he may have gotten an indication from them as to when they were hoping to to break ground. I think it would be well before then, but um Dave, I don't know.
I, I thought I read it pretty well, but what I want to add to this and if we got some time, I think a motion to to receive and file. If anybody knows this, we go back to fifty-nine. If anybody knows this, we go back to fifty nine, Mr. Ginsburg owned this and he owned the Rutland Railway Railroad. He sold these right of way to the state of Vermont. State of Vermont owns this and leases this to Vermont Railway, Vermont Railway doesn't own this, state of Vermont owns it. And there's a right of way on either side of it, and I know that for a fact, there's been a lot written about that. And I happened to meet somebody last summer who's in charge of all the rail for, for Vermont Railway throughout the state of Vermont. And, and he talks about that, that there's some D N H rail that they maintain and that Delaware and Hudson and there's Vermont Rail and whatever. But be interesting to look into because that's been an age old fight. House Center had that about who owns the, the rail at the entrance of House Center, who owns the, the land that we cross, was it, is it, were the cars first, was railroad first? But it'd be, you know, they maybe try to pull a little game on us because, you know, trains were here before cars were. But they also may own, you know, wider than their drawing is showing. And I don't know if this is a survey map, I'll admit, I don't know how to read them, but, you know, there, there may be a little wiggle room here. But I was always under the impression that when Mr. Ginsburg sold it, he sold, I'm not under the impression, I've read it for a fact, but this is state land. This is all state land where these rails are, and the width of it, I, I don't know. But I, I think we oughta sit on it for a while until we're sure.
Other woman Davis.
So Jim, I understand that the contamination is in the city right of way, but do we know who or how the contamination occurred?
How it occurred? No, and again, you know, we don't know that there's contamination on, in the city right of way. There may not be, but we wanted to bring that to light, knowing that there had, had been some contamination in the past in that vicinity. We thought, you know, it's possible or likely that, that there, that there may be some. That's, that's really the extent of it, I, I wish that, you know, they had done some borings and, and had, and made that information available to us, but they didn't do that.
Thank you.
If I may, Chair Wickham, just quickly, on page twenty six is, is what's proposed for that particular section. So you just get an idea of, of what we're signing up for. So that, that's, it says, within the municipal right of way, the costs of handling treatment and disposal of petroleum contaminated soils or other hazardous material contamination in existence prior to the construction of, of that portion of the project shall be nonparticipating. So that's sort of a term of art with the rest of this agreement. But then the, the more layperson thing here is next, accordingly, any costs associated there with shall be the sole responsibility of the municipality. So that's where, again, originally, I, you know, we had proposed a couple things that I think would make sense for the city, which is one. You know, state, this is your project, we're getting some benefit, but we also don't wanna, you know, sign up for this kinda, you know, roulette wheel of, of, you know, what sort of contamination you're gonna dig up and that we're gonna have to deal with no matter what. So we, we, you know, we wanted them to take on the cost of it, and that was a no. And we also had suggested that, you know, we just have the opportunity to basically shut down the project if, if we found something and they told us it was gonna be X amount. And we just said, you know, that's, that's too much for, for the benefit that we're getting, so just cover it back up and, and move on. And that wasn't, wasn't an option either, so, you know, that's, it's, it's generally a take it or leave it scenario with the, the state. And they did, they, they did make a couple changes for us in this case. And so maybe they'd be willing to make other changes, I don't, I don't know. But this is as far as we could get them just by making, you know, what I thought were reasonable requests and arguments as to why we didn't think particular provisions were, were appropriate, you know, given, given the parties standing here.
Mr. Chairman, motion to table?
You can make a motion to table.
I'd like to make a motion to table, please. Thank you.
Alderman DePoy, did you second, okay. So we have a motion to table and it has been seconded, and this is non-debatable. So with all those in favor of tabling this issue, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Um. I'm, I'm gonna have to ask clerk to take a roll call, though, it's too hard to tell. Clerk Heck.
Oh goodness. Alderman Russo.
Yes.
Other woman Davis.
No.
Alderman Gillum.
No.
Alderman Talbot.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
No.
Alderman DePoy.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
No.
Other woman Savage.
Yes.
And Alderman Neri.
No.
Four, five, two, one, two, three, four. There's not enough, motion.
Motion fails, it is five no, four yes. Other woman Davis.
So I just, I voted against Sammy's motion just because I thought it was a little early yet. I have a couple of other questions that I'd like to get answered. And so I, I, I think, I think the person that contaminated is the state of Vermont itself, who goes through with the trains, my opinion. But another thing is, is can we, I know that they refused, but now that you've brought it to the Board of Alderman and we have to sign off on this agreement, can we say we won't sign off until we see some boring, some samples? I mean, I think we need to push back a little bit and say we want some sampling done. So we have some idea of whether we're looking at no contamination or fifty thousand dollars worth of contamination. We know history wise, the state, the railroad doesn't play nice in the sandbox with the city. We've been to court before, so I'm sorry, I just, I'm not comfortable just being blind and saying, okay, let's go. And if we have to pay fifty thousand dollars, well, hopefully contingency will have the money. I wanna see a sampling, otherwise I'm a no vote.
Thank you, Davis. Attorney Blumer, if I could ask you just to clarify something you were saying to the board earlier. Were you in essence saying that we vote, a vote of no would, in a sense, kick it back to the negotiating table?
Yes, I mean, the mayor, I think, had the last discussion with, with Dan DeLaBrer, so he may have a sense as to whether a no would just mean that they move on or whether a no, you know, they would be, you know, willing to try to meet us all the way or partway if, if we were to go back to them and, go back to them and, and say that the board had voted it down. I mean, right now, it's just been the mayor and I and Jim raising questions. And this is basically as far as we could get them to move, I think, prior to putting it in front of the board. But certainly if the board is uncomfortable and, and would vote it down, then that would be left to them to decide whether they're, they're gonna move on or whether they wanna try to address those issues.
So, so let me, let me speak to that. This is a project that's actually been brought forward for several months, going back to last fall, where they were insistent on us really taking on, and those of you who were here for the master license agreement discussion, taking on a lot of the responsibility and, and for any, anything that happened at that crossing, whether it's contamination or not. And at that time, we couldn't agree, I told them, you know, it wasn't gonna, wasn't, wasn't not a go, and I didn't hear another word. They got back in, in touch with me a couple of months ago and said that they'd had, re-looked at their budget and they had some room to fund this project. And it was, it is an important project, and I just wanna reiterate that. There is, it's a several hundred thousand dollar project that's going to have some benefits for the city. Not the least of which are that crossing, which is a perennial problem, you know, pedestrian crossings throughout the city. But, and, and particularly down there, where there's a lot of, more activity with the Winters Farmers Market and other potential uses for that property there. New sidewalks, you know how expensive it is to build sidewalks in the city? That sidewalk, one million dollars isn't gonna go too far, any help we can get with that would be, would be a help. I, we have gone back and forth with them, they have conceded, made a couple of concessions. We made it very clear to Dan that it was gonna have to go to the, to the board. And there were, there was a very good possibility that there was gonna be some pushback on this particular issue. But I said, we're, we're, I'm ready to do that because I think that the, there is a tremendous amount of benefits to this project. And not the least of which is that there are other crossings around the city that are gonna need some work in the next ten to twenty years. And this kind of a, or maybe even five to ten years. And this kind of a back and forth with the state is not beneficial either to them or to us, and obviously to the railroad, if we're gonna have to fight every time that there's a, that there's a question about doing, doing work at a crossing. So I'm more than happy to bring this back to Dan and say, you know, tell him the concerns. Say the least of what, you know, we wanna find out at least, have some idea of what there is there for contamination and see if it's a project that they still wanna fund and go forward with. My guess is it is because I think it's a big one for them. We've got passenger rail that's gonna be coming into Rutland again here very soon. Not only landing in Rutland, but by the first of the year, it's gonna be going, gonna be going to Burlington. So there is, and an increase in freight traffic, which is a benefit for all of us too. So there's a lot of different things that go along with this. Obviously, the railroad benefits, the railroad's the big, the big player in this game. They don't seem to care a whole lot about, you know, municipalities in a lot of realms. But I think with this particular project, there's a lot of benefits for the city with it. And having a better idea if it's, you know, I don't know, twenty thousand, forty thousand, at least we had some benefits before or some idea of what the risk is for the city, I, I, I don't think that that's out of the question. But I do wanna make sure the, the, the board understands there's a tremendous amount of benefit to, to the city, both in safety and you can translate that into dollars if we were ever to do a lot of that work. It would cost us, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars if not more.
Thanks Mayor LaR, Alderman Russo, followed by Alderman Gillum.
Yes, just maybe to clarify my motion earlier, I thought a yes wasn't beneficial to the city and that all of us have questions that the other sides really gotta answer. I thought a no vote was kinda malicious and hostile because there are some really good things for us here. So my motion to table would have been a better message that, you know, we tabled it and then in the next few weeks, we could have gotten the answers we want. God knows we have a ton of them, but I believe the mayor, I think there's some nice things there for us. But this is one of those where we gotta be careful because I think the dark could hit us in the butt if we don't, you know, go carefully. So I just hate to see a no vote because there's a lot of benefit to us. But that's why I said table, I thought sounded nicer than a no vote. But I'm sitting here waiting for the nine o'clock hour.
I have Alderman Gillum, then Alderman Clifford.
I, I agree with the mayor, I mean, this is a very important project for us. It's also an important project for the neighborhood because we can connect to our bike trails and things like that with a safety issue crossing that area from the farmer's market and back into the neighborhood. So I am concerned, but on the other hand, I think we need to send a message with the mayor and the city engineer that what Sharon suggested is boring some holes so we have a little bit more predictability. I think we're not against them, we just need a little bit more information is what we need. So we know what we're looking at for dollars and cents down the road here, that's my concern.
Alderman Clifford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, I'll make a motion to refer this back to the administration to discuss further concerns with the, with the state of Vermont, Vermont Railway.
All right, we have a motion to refer this to the, the mayor and his administration, and it has been seconded. Is there any further discussion, debate or questions on this issue? Hearing and seeing, with all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Attorney Blumer, I believe you are up again with amendments to engineering services agreement with Weston and Sampson, pages forty four through fifty eight.
Thank you, I think I'm gonna turn it over to Jim. He can, I think he can give you a little bit better synopsis of what these two, what the two amendments are related to. And I had provided you a, you know, confidential email a few days ago, which, which talked a little bit about how these fit into the settlement agreement that was made with Weston and Sampson. I think it was the first meeting in May. So if there are questions about that, I can answer those, or attempt to answer those, either in open session or if it's more appropriate to go into executive session, we can do that as well. But I think I'll, I'll just quickly let Jim set these, set these two up. And what we're really looking for is the, the board's authorization to assign these so that we can seek reimbursement from the state.
Okay, so there's two amendments in your packet. The first, the first amendment to the contract was for the design contract in the amount of thirty nine thousand, two hundred and nine dollars and fifty eight cents. And this had to do with, basically it covered additional environmental engineering services performed by Weston and Sampson to address the PCB contamination found on the Green Mountain Power property along the path of the, of the proposed sewage force main. So once that became a problem, basically Weston and Sampson got involved with having several meetings with, with us, with the state, with Green Mountain Power, coming up with soil management plans and doing everything necessary to try to resolve this contamination issue with the state site, site management group. So basically, we didn't know at the time, you know, how many hours this was gonna take, it was an evolving type thing. So they weren't able to give us a contract amendment at that time. We just had them do the work that was necessary to keep the project moving ahead. And it culminated in this, in this final amendment right now. So that was, that was in the design phase. The second amendment has to do with the construction contract phase. And that amount is forty thousand, four hundred dollars and seventy cents. And again, you know, we'll get into more detail next week when we, when we meet with the DPW committee. But when the horizontal drilling was failing, it was determined that we needed to do additional ledge probes just to find out where the ledge was and whether there was a good chance that we could get through it. So again, Weston and Sampson ordered additional ledge probes. And that was to determine where the bedrock was and to determine what the impact would be on, on the new force main alignment. And just to, just to finalize that, so, you know, we did, we did authorize, or the commissioner at the time authorized both of these, or really authorized all this work to be done because there really wasn't a choice to be made. In order to proceed, we had to resolve the PCB. to proceed, we had to resolve the PCB issue and we also needed to determine whether, uh, ledge was going to, uh, curtail the horizontal drilling.
I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules if anyone's so inclined.
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules. It has been seconded. Would all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries.
So just to, so unclear, would it be the amendment one that we're moving as our motion?
Yes, there's, there's two amendments and I would do them, uh, separately. Um, they're, they may, Jim, are they both amendment number ones because they're two, two separate?
Yes. So I'll move for amendment one, design control, uh, thirty-nine thousand two hundred and nine dollars and fifty-eight cents. This amendment covers the additional environmental engineering services required to address the potential PCB contamination at the Green Mountain Power facility along the path of the proposed, proposed sewer force main. I so move.
Second.
Have a motion that has been seconded. Is there any discussion or debate? Hearing and seeing none. Would all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries.
And I'll move amendment one, construction phase contract, forty thousand four hundred seventy. This amendment was required to perform additional ledge probes in order to determine the extent to which bedrock might impact the revised force main alignment. And I so move.
Second.
We have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any discussion or debate? Hearing and seeing none. Would all favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to reports of standing committees. Up first, we have Alderman DePoy, Recreation Committee, Multi-Use Path. Alderman DePoy.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Recreation Committee minutes are from Thursday, May sixth. The topic was the multi-use path. We had myself, Alderman Davis, Alderman Savage, Alderman Neary and Alderman Talbot from the committee present. And then we had Alderman Gillum, Dungus and Franco also avail, also, uh, on the call. Others present were Susan Schreibman and Paul Gallo. Susan opened the meeting, um, describing to us, uh, how she and Paul Gallo have been working on the multi-use path for many years and they have alerted the city that suburban propane has offered the properties located on the north side and the south side of West Street to the city. The parcels have to go through environmental impact studies and need to be appraised. Suburban propane has agreed to pay for the appraisals, but the city would need to have phase one work done on the southern parcel. The work would cost approximately thirty-five hundred dollars and the city would also need to enter into the BRELLA program, which is the Brownfields reuse and environmental liability limitation program, which would hold the city harmless for any ongoing environmental problems on the lots going forward, so long as the city does not add to the contamination in the future. Total cost for both would be approximately four thousand dollars. Alderman Talbot moved to use no more than four thousand dollars out of the Zomias funds to pay for the environmental phase one work and the five hundred dollar enrollment in the BRELLA program. The motion passed five to zero and I so move.
Second.
All right. We have a motion that has been seconded. Is there any discussion, debate or questions? If not, would all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman DePoy.
The committee also heard from Susan and Paul about how phase five is progressing over on Door Drive. Uh, the idea of a boardwalk along Door Drive and retaining wall and then repaving Door Drive from River Street to Ripley Road is a preferred scenario, but it comes with a pricey, uh, price tag, hefty price tag of two point three million dollars. There have also been discussions about turning Door Drive into a one-way street in the same stretch of road, which some residents have been open to and others have not. The possibility of an alternating light to direct traffic has been thought of, but could be very confusing. Also, emergency vehicles have to be thought of in this areas. There's not much road accessibilities in the area. There's only the two bridges that bring, um, traffic in and out of the, uh, St. Joe's area, Door Drive, Campbell Road, that area. Um, funding sources for this project could be federal, maybe speaking with the federal delegation about this project. It would be great to invite people to have a walkabout down in segment five area to get better acquainted with where and how the pieces would fit together. Maybe a conversation with Kim Peters to set that up later this summer. Um, this portion of the committee meeting is FYI and, uh, that will stay in committee for further discussion.
Thank you, Alderman DePoy. Any questions or comments, Alderman DePoy? All right. Thank you very much. Uh, we are on to Alderman Garuso, General Committee. Alderman Garuso.
Thank you for sliding me in there. I didn't see it till 10 minutes before the meeting, but on Tuesday, May 11th at 5:30, the General Committee of the City of Rutland Board of Aldermen met via e-meeting to discuss electronic meetings and in-person meetings and accommodating the outside public. In attendance was myself, Alderman Garuso, Board President Whitcomb, Alderman DePoy, Dungus, Talbot, Davis, Clifford, Gillum, Neary, Franco, along with Mayor Lair by the telephone and Rutland Herald reporter Gordon Driscillow. Several in attendance were very participatory, including Alderman Dungus, mentioning he is in the business of wiring up facilities like the Aldermanic Chambers for e-meetings and would gladly watch over any part of the process on behalf of the board. Alderman Davis had mentioned hearing that the local cable access company would possibly be retrofitting the room for their needs and we should discuss with them any relationship that they would have, uh, with our needs, um, for, for the future. Alderman Clifford mentioned the offer from the Superintendent of Recreation and Parks for, um, use of the recreation center by the board until our chambers are ready. Mayor Lair is also willing to offer any contingency money from his budget to help facilitate the board's meeting in person. In closing, it seemed to be a proper and popular consensus, wait until we have a clearer understanding from federal, state and local authorities as to what our capabilities and limitations are and how we can best accommodate the outside public to provide safety to all. The meeting adjourned at six 10 P M. And there were no motions that came out of the meeting, but if you don't mind, I'd, I'd like to know, Mr. Chairman and, and anyone else, uh, what they think. Since that meeting, I know masks now have changed. Has anyone heard anything new? I know the, the, the mask requirement's been dropped. Uh, uh, has that affected group, uh, groups? Uh, has that changed anything? Uh, um, I know one of the things we talked about was being able to do both, to do e-meetings and, and in-person meetings. Uh, um, anybody got any comment?
Uh, thank you, Alderman Garuso. I, I, I do know that Alderman Dungus couldn't make tonight's meeting, so I don't know what follow-up he's been able to have. Um, Alderman Franco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, yes, uh, Alderman Dungus and I met to review what requirements might, might be necessary if we were to fit the chambers for a hybrid model, which I think is what the committee was mostly looking at. Um, we are in the process of finally, finalizing those recommendations. Um, and we are also setting up a meeting with PEG TV to better understand, uh, what, um, plans they have already going and how ours would fit into that. Um, I think on the point that Alderman Garuso makes regarding new guidelines, personally, I, I think, um, that I would feel comfortable still moving forward with, with the hybrid approach, um, because I think, uh, one, that there are still folks who still might not be comfortable regardless of, um, the, the newer guidelines, but also because I think long-term, this could be an opportunity to increase access for those who, uh, might not otherwise be able to attend meetings in person. Um, and so I personally, I would like to move forward, um, with those plans if the board chose to go that route.
All right. Now, Mr. Chairman, you want to keep it in committee?
Yeah, I think, thank you, Alderman Garuso.
Thanks, Alderman. Franco too. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. That brings us to reports of select committees, of which we have none. Reports of representatives, we have nothing. Patience letters, miscellaneous communications, we have nothing. Board of Control Commissioners, we have nothing. Is there any unfinished business to come before the board? Seeing, hearing none. That brings us miscellaneous motions, resolutions, new business. Up first, we have Alderman Franco, Rutland Pride. Alderman Franco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'll try to keep this brief because I know we're at the hour already. I'm sure folks are very tired. Um, I wanted to take this opportunity tonight to, um, you know, say how excited I was to see the board unanimously approve the Declaration of Inclusion, um, earlier in this month and, um, really state how important that is to me. Um, also, you know, personally, as someone who, um, is part of the LGBTQ community, since we do identify within the categories that we, um, adopted to holistically embrace, um, also gender identity expression as well as sexual orientation. Um, so that was really wonderful to see, um, you know, really embraced by the board. Um, and it got me to thinking about ways that we could, uh, back up that declaration with actions and how we might be able to identify and address any disparities that any of those classes might face disproportionately. And so I wanted to point out, um, a Herald article that came to my attention, uh, that was released a few weeks back that covered, uh, and highlighted, uh, some of the results from the Vermont Youth Behavior Risk Survey. Um, and in that survey, uh, it was found that LGBT youth in Rutland County in particular, uh, face statistically significant higher rates of bullying, of feeling sad or hopeless, of attempting suicide, of trying cigarettes before the age of 13, um, and also, uh, higher rates of drinking alcohol and using prescription drugs, um, inappropriately. And so with that being said, I think it's of utmost, utmost importance that, that our board, uh, think about, you know, trying to alleviate these issues and address them, um, in different ways and to be creative with that. Uh, and one way that I've seen in our community that is upcoming in trying to address that is, is trying to think about how we create a welcoming, a culture here in Rutland, a, a culture where our youth in particular, um, don't feel sad or hopeless and don't turn to, to these, um, drugs and alcohol. Um, and also, uh, a culture that embraces, uh, adults and our entire LGBTQ community. Um, and so I've been in communicate, in communication with a group called Queer Connect, Inc., uh, which is a new nonprofit here in Rutland, uh, that is working to address this through creating, um, Rutland Pride 2021. Uh, and that is led by Carly Haven, who I, I know is actually on the call with us tonight. So I thank her for waiting out, uh, two-hour meeting, um, to show her commitment to this. But, um, you know, Carly and the Queer Connect Group are putting on a, a calendar of events, um, this summer. It's called the Summer of Pride. Um, and that includes various, um, family-friendly events, including Pride Story Hour, uh, Drag Bingo and the signature event, which is a Pride Caravan, uh, which, uh, folks will bring community folks together to, uh, drive down to Manchester or over to Manchester and, uh, meet up with the Bennington Sister Organization, um, to celebrate Pride. Uh, so a lot of, uh, wonderful initiatives to increase visibility and support LGBTQ community, um, are going on. And I wanted to ensure that, given the board's commitment to, um, creating a welcoming community, um, that we try and identify ways that the city could support, uh, however that may be. Uh, and I spoke with Mayor Lair, uh, last week and he was very open to, um, you know, sitting down with, uh, the organizers of Rutland Pride and, and other stakeholders to find ways, um, that may be fitting for his office to play a role, uh, in Rutland Pride this summer. Uh, and so I would welcome any, you know, comments from the board if you have thoughts on, on that. Um, and then also, um, you know, given all of this, I ultimately would like to move, or I move, uh, to send, uh, the discussion of, uh, the city exploring, uh, a partnership to support, um, Rutland Pride in some regard, uh, to the communication, oh, sorry, the Community and Economic Development Committee.
Second.
We have a motion that has been seconded to refer to Community and Economic Development Committee, um, to the discussion of a partnership between the city of Rutland and the Rutland Pride Network. Is there any discussion, debate? Hearing and seeing none. With all those in favor of referring, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Alderman Franco.
Thank you.
Uh, we are still under miscellaneous motions, resolutions, new business. Have Alderman DePoy and then I see Alderman Clifford right after.
I will defer to Alderman Clifford. Go ahead.
Alderman Clifford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, just a couple of quick things. Um, we recently had a, uh, retiree in the city of Rutland, for the city of Rutland, he's, uh, David Shortsleeves, and he was with the city of Rutland at the wastewater treatment plant for 28 years. And I just think it's, uh, it's a good thing that we recognize, uh, his, uh, his workmanship through the years. So I just wanted to say that. Uh, the other thing is too, I see that the, uh, the garden club has begun to do work around town, uh, especially in the downtown area around the gateways. And I just wanted to commend them on, on their, on their work, you know, as a volunteer, uh, volunteer organization. And, uh, they do great work and I just wanted to say, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Clifford. All right. Uh, Alderman DePoy, you are up.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, last week, um, I, uh, saw a news article on WCAX that really, really got to me. And I just feel that I have to take this opportunity to express my outrage with the president of the Rutland Area NAACP, Maya Schultz. According to the WCAX news story by Olivia Lyons, Maya Schultz has asked the school superintendents of Vermont to boycott playing Rutland High School in any sports if the Rutland School Board reinstates the name Raiders in the Arrowhead imagery. I cannot and I will not allow such an attack on this community to go by without voicing my vehement disapproval of such tactics. Maya Schultz has not only made this reprehensible request against adults in this community, but more importantly, it is a request which is a direct threat against the schoolchildren of Rutland. I cannot believe that someone in Maya Schultz's position would directly threaten the children in our school system because it looks as though she might not get her way. I support Maya Schultz's right to have an opinion as to whether she likes the Raider name in Arrowhead or not, but such a retaliatory effort is not befitting a person who represents the NAACP. And I call on the NAACP to immediately remove Maya Schultz from her post as president of the area of the Rutland Area NAACP. Threatening schoolchildren should not be allowed by any organization and this attempt on Maya Schultz's part is akin to Representative William Knott's threats a few months ago to enter a bill in the Vermont State Legislature, which would ban the children of this city from competing in athletics if the nickname of the school were in any way associated with Native American names or imagery. Actions taken by these two individuals are outrageous as they attempt to punish adults by punishing our children. I don't believe that resignation by Maya Schultz is appropriate as that would only legitimize her request of the superintendents. Removal from her post is the only way to send a clear message to those seeking to replace her that threatening children will not be allowed and it will be immediately dealt with by the NAACP. And no future actions against the students of Rutland will be tolerated. And Mr. President, with that, I would like to also read, uh, in a, a press release from, um, the Native American Guardians Association. I'd like to read that into the record, please.
Yes. You read it into the record. Yes, you read it into the record.
Thank you. Today, the Native American Guardians Association announced its support for the return of Rutland High School's Raider name and logo. According to NAGA, Board Member Eunice Davidson says the elimination of Rutland High School's Raider name and logo dishonors the proud history of Native Americans. One of NAGA's primary goals is to partner with public schools to develop respectful and culturally appropriate Native American logos. That's why NAGA's motto is to educate, not eradicate. NAGA Board Member Tony Henson also responded to demands by Rutland Area NAACP President Maya Schultz for a boycott of Rutland High School's sports teams if the school returns to the Raider name and logo. As fellow members of a historically suspect class within the meaning of Fourteenth Amendment, as well as people of color, Henson said, we were shocked by the demand by Ms. Schultz that public schools boycott Rutland High School if the school returns to the Raider name and logo. Frankly, Native Americans don't need to be told by the NAACP as to how they should really feel about Native American heritage and sports team iconography. Davidson added, while we are hesitant to suggest the NAACP has lost its way after decades of fighting for the civil rights of persons of color, NAGA would like to offer Ms. Schultz an opportunity to publicly debate members of NAGA's leadership on this important topic. We look forward to hearing from Ms. Schultz about our offer. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. We are still under miscellaneous motions, resolutions, and new business. Alderman Gillum.
Sorry. Just to remind the board that we're having a charter ordinance committee meeting on Thursday, five-thirty.
And to let you know, there's ten shopping carts on Pine Street, the, um, Park Avenue intersection that could get picked up anytime.
Thank you for the.
Okay. We are talking, we are going to be talking about shopping carts. Sharon kind of led right into that. Thank you.
Excellent. Are there any other miscellaneous motions, resolutions, or new business? Uh, Alderman Franco. Alderman Franco.
I can let, uh, Alderman Clifford go. That's.
Yeah, I was gonna move to adjourn, so you go ahead.
Well, um, yes, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to state, I mean, I, I disagree, uh, with Alderman Deploy entirely. Um, I think that there are a lot of comments of debate. This is certainly an issue that is, uh, being openly debated by our community as we speak. Um, and I think that, uh, you know, it, it wouldn't be in the best interest of the community to only hear that side tonight. And so, um, you know, I just wanted to say that I think regarding, um, Ms. Schultz's, uh, comments and her call, uh, she is a private citizen and has every right to, uh, you know, speak what she believes would be a necessary movement. Certainly as the leader of NAACP that has worked historically, uh, for marginalized groups and in particular people of color. So I would say that, uh, you know, ultimately she, uh, has every right to voice her opinion on what should be done and the school leaders have every right to make the choice that they will make and I trust that, you know, they'll think critically about that. Um, but as a board member here tonight, I can't, I can't sit by and, and only allow one side to be heard. I think that would, uh, not be fair to the ongoing debates. So I just wanted to say that and I openly invite, um, Alderman Deploy or anyone who wants to speak about these issues, you know, to further engage in, in dialogue. I think that's what's gonna help our community to move forward ultimately is hearing each other and, um, I just want to say I hear the concerns, uh, that are being voiced. Certainly, I'm open to the, the conversations. I know that everyone else on this board has been working and has been committed to working together, so I, I hope that, um, you know, we can share that, uh, and, and be a model for our school board, um, and, and, you know, employ those practices of seeking out multiple voices, but certainly I wanted to just state that I, I disagree personally, so that's all I wanted to say.
Alderman Garuso, I, I kind of saw your hand, but it didn't. Do you have anything?
Well, the only, the only thing was, was about, uh, people calling and asking us to take care of stuff, but, um, I, I don't know if you want to break up what's going on, but I, I've been getting calls, you know, people saying they're not getting anywhere with City Hall and I haven't had those in the year or so I've been on the board and I didn't know what others do. Uh, lady called today, said, uh, she's called City Hall several times and the neighbor's lawn hasn't been mowed yet this year. She says it's infested with snakes and woodchucks and, and, uh, ticks and it's affecting her property and she says City Hall hasn't done anything, so I called and nobody called me back either. Um, what do we do? I mean, I said technically I have to have six other people to vote with me in order to get anything done, but I don't think we should be bringing things to the board. Does anybody got any suggestions? I, I feel bad, but, um, I haven't had this happen to me honestly since the nineties. Help.
Still, Alderman Clifford, Sam, and Alderman.
Yeah, I just want to say, um, Alderman Garuso, I, I get, I get calls myself, um, as you do. Um, I try my best to, uh, refer them to the administration and go through the proper channels. Um, so, I mean, uh, I don't, I guess, I would suggest to keep trying, send an email, a text, uh, and, and until you get someplace, but that's, that's normally that what I would do, so just throwing it out there.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, if I may, um, I don't know if you're getting the same phone call that I'm getting, um, Sam, if it's the same property, but I think it's, it's, um, I, um, I guess when I reach out, I, I do get a response. I'll, I'll either send an email to the department head that I'm trying to, and be in touch with or whoever, um, is responsible for that duty. Um, but also I think mowing a lawn is difficult if it's not your property or property that, um, there's someone available to. There is a city ordinance that says that your property has to be mowed by August something. Uh, we're a long way from August something, so I don't know if that's the same issue that you're having, that I'm having. Um, but, um, I would just continue to have you reach out. I don't have any problem, um, getting a response out of City Hall and in my thirty years, I never have.
All right. Well, thank you. I, like I said, I haven't had it happen and today one happened and I, I made a call. I said, call me back, let me know what to do with this person and I haven't heard back, so maybe, maybe I'm, I'm jumping the gun, but I don't, you know, I, I think Paul's right too. They should go through the channels because we're really only as good as six other votes. Right?
But thank, thank you, Alderman Garuso. It, it may be just, but w- we are in transition right now. We're, we're without a building inspector. We have a new, um, zoning administrator coming on board. So there's some fluctuations. It may be slowing down the process. It, it's worth rela-
Well, I'm not complaining, just, just looking for advice, that's all. We, I, God bless them. Thank you. How about I move to adjourn, by the way?
Uh, real quick, Alderman.
No, uh, that's what I was gonna say, Mr. President. I was gonna say the same thing. The department's having some, uh, real, uh, issues trying to get organized with new people coming in and I think we need to cut them a little slack. It was a sudden thing for one of our members, uh, to pass away and it's gonna take a few minutes. So what I do is I sent an email and I said, put this on the list. Eventually it'll get there. Uh, he's done a couple of things for me and it took maybe a week for, to, to get to it, but they are getting to it, so just cut them a little slack. That's all.
Thank you, Alderman Gillum. So I, I think with that, we would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
I'll move. I said it.
To adjourn that has been seconded. Would all those in favor please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we stand adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.